Not a gavel today?
No gavel today, but I'm banging my fist on the desk.
Yeah, we're doing better than your shoes.
Oh, that one went way better. All right, I'm calling to order the October 16, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Chee, can you take the roll?
Yes, Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
And Mr. Dushan is absent.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask that we move the adoption of the agenda above the speaker series. So procedurally, let's move four to above three.
I move from four to above three.
Can I get a second?
We've already done one and two.
I know, I second. All right, so can we get a motion to alter the agenda that says we're going to adopt it before we do the speaker series? It seems out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great. Okay, now we're on to our speaker series, which is Mr. Paul Gilbert of Nova Parks.
Yes, and chair, if I could, just by way of introduction, Paul Gilbert is going to talk about the great work that Nova Parks is doing, not only for Falls Church, but the entire region. We've got an active cooperation going on. The city and Nova Parks have active cooperation as we have for years. The historic site at Tanner Hill is an example of that. There are a number of regional parks just within Falls Church's backyard that city residents can enjoy because of the great work they're doing. And I think also tonight, not only will Paul be talking about Nova Parks in general, but also the WNOD and opportunities to expand travel options within the city specifically.
Sounds fantastic, looking forward to it.
Also with, just to provide a little more context, also with Paul Gilbert today are Jeff Tarbert and Paul Baldino. Jeff and Paul Baldino are the city's board members, the city's reps on Nova Parks Board. Jeff has been there for a number of years. Paul is the junior member, but Paul is certainly no stranger to Parks nor to the city. Paul, for years, served as the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee of Transportation and now serves as the Vice Chair.
All right, I'm looking forward to hearing from all the Pauls.
Two Pauls, one Jeff.
Well, there's another one here.
Oh, yeah, I'm out Pauled. Just wanted to say Jeff Tarbert, 426 Park Avenue. I've been on the Nova Parks Board, had the honor of serving for probably 10, 11 years now, which, like dog years, in Nova Park Board terms, is very short. My predecessor was Walter Mess, who served for 35, 45 years. And the most immediate retiree was, or because he moved out of town, was our city's friend, Barry Bushow. And he left about a year and a half ago and was ably succeeded by Paul Baldino. But Barry was, as you know, was a real fan of the trail and rode it all the time and was head of our trail committee. And there are a number of catalysts that got this whole project going. And Barry, since I've been on the Board, was talking about the need of how do we keep the service levels high on this trail when so many people in so many areas are using it, counts up to from 100,000 to 200,000 people a year on the trail, on the 46, 45-mile-long trail. So just wanted to acknowledge in his presence that--
And he's watching.
And he said he was watching.
Hi, Barry.
It was early in the agenda, which it is, so-- But as Paul Stoddard just mentioned, very ably succeeded by Paul Baldino, who was formerly head of the Park Authority, Fairfax Park Authority. And as you may recall, three or four years ago, as he often does, rode the whole trail and took pictures of all the things that all the jurisdictions were doing. About the same time that Paul Gilbert convened with all the six-member jurisdictions in the Park Authority, a safety summit to look at the entire trail. Not only were the division, the cities and towns and counties' laws all being enforced, but where was the congestion, where were the safety issues, where were the accidents happening? What could we do to make the trail serve our citizens and its users at the highest and safest level? So all those things have come together to kind of bring us here tonight and turn it over to Paul Baldino for a minute and then Paul Gilbert. But thanks for having us on your agenda. Nice meeting you all.
I ask to speak really to just give you some numbers, if you'll forgive me for reading. Of course, you know, the WNOD trail is 45 miles long, running from Sherrlington to Percival. It's recognized as one of the most heavily-used rail trails in the country, and it's increasingly become a commuter route in addition to being a recreational amenity. Though Falls Church doesn't measure trail use, we do have readings from Arlington's electromagnetic counter near the fire station. So for the 45-day period, September 1 through October 15, the counter recorded 52,127 bikes and pedestrians.
Wow.
That's an average of over 1,150 per day. 63% of those occurred in the commuting hours of 5:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. and 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. So we're very excited that Falls Church will be the pilot jurisdiction for trail widening to accommodate our increasing volume and to separate pedestrians from cyclists. This is a major coup for the city. We're by far the smallest of the six jurisdictions in the consortium. Member jurisdictions are based on population, $4.46 per capita. So in FY '18, Falls Church will contribute a little less than $62,000 to the Nova Parks versus Fairfax County's 5.2 million and Arlington's 1 million. With the trail and the Tanner Hill site, you could argue that we get a pretty good return on investment. So with that, let me turn it over to Paul. The other Paul, not that Paul.
Hi, I'm Paul Gilbert, and it's an honor to be here. Thank you for having us. And we are so blessed with fantastic board members from Falls Church. So you heard Jeff talking about Walter Mess and Barry Bushow, and now we have Jeff Tarbert and Paul Baldino, who are just stars on our Board and help us do all kinds of great things. So I wanted to kind of run through some slides rather quickly to give you a little overview of the things going on at Nova Parks and then focus in on the dual-trail efforts, which is the heart of the matter. So just a little bit about our region, you heard, we have three counties and three cities that make up our organization. We have over 12,000 acres, we have 32 regional parks, and our--
Don't mind me.
Oh, sure. And we try to have our parks be sort of unique destination sites. Certainly, the WNOD counts as that, and Tanner Hill with its amazing history also certainly fits into that unique destination site category. You had handed out to you our new strategic plan. I am contractionally obligated to hand that out to everyone I meet. So you are, I hope that you have an opportunity at a later time to kind of review that. We put a lot of work into it. Our Board was heavily involved, and it's really setting the path for the next five years. And we are a very goal-focused organization that sets goals and achieves them, and we're very proud of this report. Tanner Hill, we've mentioned several times. We're really proud to have, to be a part of helping to create that site and celebrate that interesting piece of history that so many people don't really know and is so relevant. So we're just thrilled to be a part of that. You also heard the basic statistics about the WNOD, 45 miles. The very first section of it was developed right here in Falls Church. The picture on your left there with the Leederhosen is Falls Church in 1974, when the very first section of the WNOD was opened. At that time, it was about six feet wide and only, you know, a few miles long, and we throughout the 1980s continued to acquire and develop the trail for its full 45 miles. Today, it is a whole different beast. It has really transformed from just a weekend recreational resource into a commuter route as well as a recreational resource. And this has gotten us thinking more about safety, both in intersections and between the intersections. So in 2014, we did a significant effort to study the safety issues related to the WNOD. We looked at a number of the worst intersections, or about seven of them. Most of those have been greatly improved at this point, and the ones that haven't, their plans in place to move them forward. We hired the University of Virginia Institute for Environmental Negotiation. They did a very in-depth study for us, identified stakeholders, had phone interviews with many of them, then came out with an online survey. We had 1,700 people respond to that with more input. Then we took all of that and we had a summit where we focused even more and drilled down even more on how to improve trail safety. The areas that came out of that study were physical changes to the intersections, many of which, like I said, have been implemented, and discussion about what kinds of changes we can make between the intersections, which is the first time we were thinking about that. That really got us thinking about the idea of a dual trail and really focusing on a strategy that would not be for the entire 45 miles, but might really be a strategy that we implement in the urban hubs, where you have lots of people coming in and out, you have more pedestrians in the urban areas to separate the cyclists from the pedestrians and make it a safer, more enjoyable experience for everyone. Some of the issues that came out of that study is we looked at speed zones in urban areas and are still thinking about that to sort of make various changes that would change the behavior and slow down some cyclists through the more congested areas. The dual trail came out as a very high priority, and that's what we have been working on since and are here today with some exciting news for that. We looked closer at the intersections and various methods that can be used to improve safety, and Paul Stoddard has been instrumental in applying for grants to improve the road crossings within the city. And we've been looking at, working on a number of road crossings elsewhere. There are actually 70 road crossings on the WNOD, so it is a major challenge. Looked at ways to improve the information of drivers so that they're more aware that they're going to be crossing not just a trail, but the WNOD, that it's a major thoroughfare for cyclists. We also looked a lot at trying to influence the culture of park users, trail users. One of the issues that we have is that people don't always get along really well when they're using the trail. And some people are aggressive, and we need to kind of instill a different ethic about how we interact with each other as we are cycling and walking and pushing strollers and walking dogs on the trail so that it reduces the amount of conflicts, everyone kind of slows down, respects each other's space a little bit more. We've created a number of humorous videos called "The Trail Guys" that deal with a number of issues about stopping at stop signs, staying well hydrated, a whole number of trail-related issues that we're trying to promote through YouTube, through a little bit of humor to train, sort of change the culture of how people interact. So now we're going to talk about dual trail. And as we talk about dual trail, one of the things that will help us get the grants that we are applying for is traffic studies that we have been doing on the volume of users on the trail. So before I show you the next slide, there are three levels of service that we're looking at, which are all poor levels of service, D, E, and F. Much like in school, you don't want that F grade and you're not too happy about the D grade. And they relate to the congestion. This is a common methodology used for transportation studies. Usually, they're just looking at motorized vehicles, but we're looking at trail users. So the, we just got this information from our consultant. We know that it's Little Falls Street, not Parkway, but our consultant didn't. But you can see on here that during the first two categories, which are weekday a.m., weekday p.m., we are at a D or E level of service. And then on the weekends, we're at an F for the most part and some E. That's bad news in that the trail is overly congested. It's good news in that that will help us get the funds to rectify the situation and move forward. So we are, have several different buckets of money that we are going to use to implement this dual trail. And the dual, this is the first dual trail we are doing right here in Falls Church. One is that we have put aside $1 million in capital for, in our capital, for the dual-trail development. And then we've applied for two grants. And you'll see in a moment that depending on which grant we get, the length of the project will be a little bit different in its first phase. The one that we really want is the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority grant, and that is a grant for $3.9 million. And with $3.9 million, we can really build a state-of-the-art dual trail for the full length of Falls Church. If we don't get that, we have a fallback position of Transportation Alternatives, which is a VDOT grant, and we would, that would be a half a million dollars. We'd put that with our million dollars and we'd have a million and a half. So the, there's a fairly big difference in magnitude, but either way, we can build a major section of dual trail, and in the best-case scenario, we get all the grants. That could happen, too. So you can see in this graphic, the red line is the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, and it would create the dual trail through the entire city of Falls Church. The yellow dotted line is if we were not to get the Transportation Authority grant, but only the Transportation Alternatives grant, and we would be using our million and their half million and doing a smaller section. We want to build as much of this as we can, and we will probably build it all, but if, depending on how the grants come in, it just depends on how extensive the first phase This is basically what the dual trail will look like. So it'll be an 11-foot cycling trail and an eight-foot pedestrian trail with, in most places, a two-foot median in the middle. And then it will, you know, sort of branch out to go around the various power poles. But that's an indication of what it would look like. This is a schematic of what it would look like with the two-foot in the middle. And this is what, a schematic of the same thing with a power pole in the middle. In other outstanding news, just outside of the city limits, we have Route 29, and VDOT is going to build a pedestrian bridge across Route 29 as part of their I-66 project. It's a wonderful thing that Richmond is coming forth with the funds, the design, the, all the efforts to build that bridge over a major intersection. You all probably are very aware, that's a very challenging one because of where it crosses and how wide the road is and how many people are turning in different directions. This will substantially improve our safety. This was one of the intersections that we identified in 2014 as our most challenged intersections, and we have a wonderful solution that will be developed sometime within the next five years, the project is happening. And so VDOT's kind of in control of the timing of when this element of it is built. And just to kind of conclude, this dual trail that we are moving forward on and getting funding and going to build conforms with the WNOD master plan that you all were involved with, and we appreciate the partnership with the city and look forward to working with you on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. That is very exciting news. And I personally am thrilled to hear it. I'm a heavy user of the trail, and I think Falls Church, of course, would be a wonderful place to begin the dual-trail experiment in addition to that overpass of Route 29. It's really fantastic. I appreciate the opportunity and the fact that it's coming to Falls Church. It's really wonderful. I mean, it's heavily used in this area, as you know, and is monitored, and I think it'd be a great place to experiment with.
It's a suitable place to build our first dual trail since Falls Church was the place we built the first trail. And I think you can anticipate that as this project is complete, that it's going to be the envy of everyone. There will be articles about it. You'll get calls from other jurisdictions saying, "How do we get that, too?" And hopefully, we can continue to tap into these and other funding sources in the future to expand.
Yeah, no, it's wonderful. So in terms of the second trail, I was not, you flipped pretty quickly, is it expected to be concrete, asphalt? I just was unclear, I couldn't tell from this drawing, it's just--
Yeah, so the details haven't been completely worked out. It will probably be asphalt with maybe stained concrete between the two so that there's a very clear visual distinction, but we don't want a grade distinction so that if you were on a bicycle and needed to swerve over into that, it would be, it would be fine, you would be, no one would get injured, but make it visually very different.
We have, along most of the trail in Falls Church, the gravel, the current gravel, I wouldn't say most, but a significant portion of the trail. I assume that's what's envisioned to turn into this second dual trail? And are there like other easements that are going to be a challenge to get, or we have no issue on those?
There may be many places where the gravel trail and this new trail sort of coexist in other places where we will have the new trail more engineered, graded, so that they line up right next to each other, whereas the gravel trail sometimes meanders a bit. So we're not basing it just off the gravel trail, but this will kind of replace that gravel trail.
And is there anything Falls Church can do to move this along? We've been, I think, very strong supporters of this trail as a commission, and I, again, personally, as a heavy user, would love to be of any assistance we can be to help move this along and be supportive and show our support for what you're doing here.
We are so appreciative of the partnership, and what you can do and what you are currently doing is helping us with getting these grants that are going to be essential to make it happen. So we greatly appreciate that, appreciate that. Paul Stoddard and Jim Snyder have been very instrumental in helping us with our grant sources that we are seeking, and that's the partnership that will make it happen.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more question, and then I'm going to turn it over to everybody else. One of the things we had talked about, Mr. Baldino's presentations over the last couple of years, is about lighting on the trail. Is that through Nova Parks, or that's through our own initiatives here in the city and our own grants, or how do we dovetail what we wanted to accomplish with signage and with lighting and things like that with what you're doing?
So we don't have any funding for the lighting. The other jurisdiction that has put lighting in is the town of Herndon, and they worked with us on permission to put the lighting in, the standards to put the lighting in, and they got the funding to do that. So I think it would be the same model. We're happy to partner with you and work on where and how that would be, you know, where and how that could go, but that would probably be a city initiative then.
Okay, great. Again, I'm thrilled, thrilled about the news and what I see here, so thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. I just wanted to clarify that the dual way will begin before or after the bridge, our bridge that's already there.
So the dual trail, if we were to get the Regional Transportation Authority's funding, would be the entire stretch of Falls Church, from border to border.
Okay, and is that going to necessitate any expanded space for the Nova Park?
Oh, you're talking about the Broad Street Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, so wherever we came to a bridge, whether it's the Broad Street Bridge or the new bridge that's getting built, the trail would go back into--
Right, right.
--a single crossing.
But as you may have heard and know, that we just went through with an approval of the railroad cottages, and the concerns were what the Nova Parks need and going to need in the future, and just double checking.
Yeah, so it will, the dual trail will be more or less in the area that the current trail is in. So we're not going to be in this project doing anything near the cottages. Part of that, though, is with the funding that we use to acquire the WNOD, to use it for any other use other than park use is, requires a lot of hoops.
Right.
And the other thing is, with only 100 feet of width on the trail, we never know what the future may bring. And the future not being the next, you know, five, 10 years as we build this, but multiple decades in the future, so--
But this development worked it out with you, so there's, the space is there, that no encroachment or anything?
They're not on our property, so, yeah.
I think she's getting at the question about the right-of-way on, you know, there's, well, that railroad avenue was technically on park right-of-way, and there was a lot of discussion we had about whether or not, because the road is, it's a 12-foot, like substandard, you know, access that they have now, and whether or not they were proposing to expand it with some grasscrete pavers. I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Yes, I am. So we allowed for six feet of grasscrete, of reinforced soil that grass grows in adjacent to Railroad Avenue that would allow a fire truck to go down that road. But it's a, it's not a permanent license or easement. We don't know of anything that will ever use that space, but--
So this dual, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. So this dual-trail idea does not conflict with that grasscrete area?
Nope, doesn't.
Yeah, I think that's what we were trying to get at.
Yeah, right.
Because there were so many questions on that that came up that we didn't quite have the answers to.
And at the time, I believe the applicant indicated, made some statement like that the trail will never be expanded, you know, for the next 50 years, and then here we are talking about expanding the trail, so--
Right, right.
I recall him saying, I recall him saying that, I think you guys heard that.
Or that it would start after the bridge.
So--
Yeah, this should not interfere with--
Will not interfere with that.
--the six-foot--
Okay, I thought that was the case, but yeah, it's good to get that on the record. While we're asking questions about the trail, I know other jurisdictions have also the issue of plowing snow and ice in the wintertime. Has that also been primarily just locally funded? I mean, how is that, was it Arlington who was trying to do that last winter? Not that we got that much snow, but when--
Yeah, so Arlington plows all of their trails. And we have a large snow blower that we keep at our maintenance facility right there off Railroad Avenue. And we use a snow blower because we have so many, so much thermoplastic on the trail surface where it says "Stop Ahead" and it's rumble strips and all that, we don't want that to be damaged with plowing, which could easily damage it. So we don't plow, we snow blow--
Okay.
--just so we get the maximum life out of the surface of the trail. So we snow blow the trail from Falls Church to Arlington and then from Falls Church west, so you all are very fortunate to get very speedy service. When there's more than a couple of inches of snow, we're right out there.
Is that a new thing? How many years have you been doing that? Because I know that--
A few years, but maybe, I'm guessing, two or three?
Okay, because I remember during the large storm we had, maybe two winters ago, that was, that was an unusual storm, but, you know, people were cross-country skiing on the trail, but I didn't see any plows or anything out there or snow blowers during that storm. I mean, maybe that was an unusual event, but that was, I think, that was just about two winters ago. I don't know, I don't recall snow plowing, but, or blowing. Just two years ago, whatever that was, 2015, February or January, whenever that was, we had about two feet or so. we had about two feet or so. But you're saying the policy is that you guys will, snow and ice? And what about, that's the other thing I've always been worried about with bicycles in the winter, you know, the ice issue too. Do you guys do any type of treatment for that, or not really? No.
So, our preferred method is the, is the snow blowing because it is lighter on the, on the trail, doesn't wear it out. If it was an ice storm, a snow blower doesn't do any good. So...
Right. Or just that the snow gets compacted into a hard surface, you know?
Right.
Yeah, just an observation. Similar to our chair, I make extensive use of the trail almost since it was built in 1974 when I moved here. And I've really noticed a big difference in the last year, maybe two years, in terms of just the quantity of traffic. It used to be that I could go out during the week and pretty much have the trail to myself, but not anymore. The trail has used, the quantity of people that use this trail, as you well know, has just increased significantly. And I hope the people that administrate the funding of the grants realize that this is not just a recreational trail anymore. It really is multi-purpose. People run errands, they work out. Yeah, there's recreation. They commute. There's all kinds of things that the trail is used for. So, hopefully, that will translate into a very successful effort on your part to get the funding.
I have a good feeling that we're going to get, that we're going to get the funding. And it's very interesting because both those funding sources are transportation funding sources. So, you know, if we were 10 or 20 years ago, we probably wouldn't be getting transportation funding for the trail. It would be viewed as a recreational resource, not a transportation network. I think because of what you've observed, there is a, there is a change in mentality. And there is a recognition that the trail is, is both, that it's certainly recreation, but it is now a transportation, you know, center. And we need to treat it as such and fund it as such.
Yeah, we call it our third great street in the city. And I think that this sort of supports that view and all of our efforts as making this case as a planning commission that this is not just a recreation thing, a recreation trail, but also, you know, can be an engine for economic development and bringing people to our city and making it inviting. So, again, I'm just repeating what I said earlier. It's just a wonderful opportunity. And I think it'll really benefit Falls Church and the users of the trail as well. So, it's fantastic.
I just have one quick question. So, I understand we have 100 feet width and presumably the dual trail fits easily within that. But do we anticipate any vigorous complaints by neighboring landowners who don't realize, "That's not my backyard. That's the trail"? Or do we have pretty much clear space through that we're not going to annoy too many people? I'm sure we'll get some complaints.
The dual trail is not going to be up to the edge of the property. So, it's, you know, we're trying to, we try to put it in the middle, you know, in various places because of the topography. We might be a little over to one side or the other, but, but it's not a, it's not a infrastructure that's over on the edge of the trail. So...
Anything else?
I just wanted to mention something about the Tenner Hill. I just wanted to say something about the Tenner Hill Park, which is just a really beautiful space. It's not used as much as it should be. I work with the Tenner Hill Foundation for the Blues Festival and everything. And so, we've had our Sunday gospel things out there for, it was just really very nice. But I think that we need to work with Parks and Rec to get perhaps some other activities out there or something. It's limited to what kind of activities can be there, but it certainly is a very, very nice space. And I don't know even how many sitting up here have seen it. And I do remember the cold day. It was dedicated.
Yes. It was so cold, wasn't it?
Whoa.
Yeah. I think I remember seeing you all bundled up.
Oh, wow.
Everyone was bundled up. It is a beautiful space. The major limitation is parking because there really isn't.
There's none.
There really isn't parking. But, you know, a block away, there is underground parking. So...
Well, we've got to make sure that that can be shared, though. There's a lot of, lot of need for parking down in that area now with the distillery and with, in the Lincoln Building. The distillery has no parking whatsoever. And so, yeah, that the underground parking can be used at the Lincoln, but we've got to make sure that the city works it out so that it's legal-beagle stuff. And, you know, I've spoken with the owners of the distilleries because he keeps saying, "Oh, people can park there." I said, "You better work it out." And then, of course, there's a lot of parking left over on the bottom level of the, where Orzo is. I mean, it's flat, never used down the lower part from ground level, never used by anybody for anything.
One last question, since we have you here. What is Nova Park's policy on invasive species, I mean, and vegetation along the trail? I mean, the park from Broad, from West Street all the way to the city line, you know, has a huge issue with invasive species and clearing that. I mean, I don't know if Nova Parks ever periodically clean that out as part of their maintenance? And what's your, what's your take on that?
Well, invasive species is an enormous problem. And part of it is really a legacy of it being a railroad. Because railroads, you know, as the trains would go back and forth, seeds and plants would fall off and it spread it. And it was also open, you know, open soil. Basically, when you have a forest where everything is intact, you don't get invasives. But once you sort of break the ground, then the invasives can take root. So, there are a lot of invasives on the WNOD, and there probably will always be. So, we beat it back.
Yeah, the vines get, in the heat of summer, I mean, it's, yeah, so that section is completely overrun with mile-a-minute weed and other things, and I don't know if kudzu, but I mean, there's a lot of bad stuff on there that takes over and chokes out, you know, some of the nice trees and other things along the edge of the trail. So...
I did an invasive plant review of the trail in the city of Falls Church with Carl Muller. So, we, we did this two, two years ago. We walked the trail together and we did look at each block and what's on it. So, porcelain berry is like a big deal. There is some kudzu. There is mile-a-minute. There is a little bit of ivy, but that's mostly coming out of people's yards. So, that was not the trail. That was people's yards. So, Carl and I talked about it a lot. We actually did one invasive removal event along the trail, but we were unable to get a lot of volunteer slithers. So, I do the events in the city. I'm able to get 10 to 40 people at most of the events in the city that we work in. But we're working in the city parks and we get a lot of the neighbors to come in. And we just weren't able to generate a lot for the community.
There's a lot. It's a huge job.
So, what Carl said is that what they are doing is they're taking the bush hog where they can. And they're cutting as close to the ground as they can. They're cutting the vines off of the roots, which if you look, there are certain parts of the trail after they've done it where you can see where a lot of the vines have died. We also tried to get some, there's some Boy Scout projects that went in that took some of the invasives out and put some milkweed and things back in. But those are hard because you have to keep maintaining it.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm just...
You know, it's a tough battle. It's a constant challenge. I don't, I know there are no easy answers, but it's something that, you know, there are times where that stretch between West Street and the city line is like overrun, it feels like.
It does.
And choking everything. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it takes labor. I can tell you, I've been working on Cherry Hill Parks in 2007. And we still have bamboo from one person's yard and we're still, we almost have all the ivy out. 2007 to now, just had an event last month, still working it. So, it's just a very difficult thing. I will say porcelain berry came to the city from the trail. We had none in our parks, saw it on the trail first, and it came into the city. It is what it is. It's...
My apologies.
No, no. I mean, well, you know, the problem is people get it on their feet and their clothes, and then they walk your trail and it walks into the trail. And then they walk it off the trail, and that's life.
I think your observations, though, that it is sort of beyond the scale of getting some people to pull the weeds, that that can work great in a small space, but it's such a big, long resource that mechanical means, the bush hogging, is probably the best, most effective method. But it's not a foolproof, and it doesn't remove it. It more or less beats it back, hopefully allows the native plant seed base to come up. And then eventually, in a couple of years, you have to go back and do the same thing.
Well, and I was planning in a few years maybe to try to circle back and try again to try and do another event there. But we're just, we're still overwhelmed with our own parks that we're just, you know. But I kind of feel like I thought we're almost to the point where Cherry Hill's just going to be maintenance. And we're getting closer to Crossman and a couple of other parks. So, we might have some bandwidth at some point to try to... And what I do is call Carl and try to work it out again. But I thought it was a good solution that at least he's cutting, cutting the vines.
We're doing invasive species removals and cuttings and things like that every, every year. But it is just a constant, constant effort. So...
Yeah. It takes about 10 years of maintenance and manual removal to really, because of the seed bank.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Anyway, but it's still a great trail, and I cannot wait for the bridge on 29 because I have never been more scared taking my kids on a cross than trying to cross 29 on the bike trail. So, it would be very nice to have a bridge there. Of course, my kids are grown and grown, so look for them.
Well, Mr. Gilbert, thank you very much on behalf of Falls Church and all you're doing for Northern Virginia and our parks. So, I really appreciate you taking your time and educating us on this.
Yeah, happy to.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, in your packets, you asked what can, can the planning commission do to support these efforts? In your packet, there is a draft letter of support from the planning commission addressed to Dan Ivelhout, who's been managing the project on the Nova Park side. This would be included as part of their grant application package. So, this is intended to be a supporting document. The CACT has already adopted a similar letter and will be submitting it. And we're taking a third letter to the council in their package for their meeting next Monday. There is a short turnaround time on getting this adopted. The application materials are due November 1st. And so, this will be your last meeting before that date. So, the idea would be to take action on this letter, either in this or some amended form, so that we can submit it. If there's a second application through NVTA funds, this is specifically to support the TAP application. If there were an NVTA application, we'd probably see a very similar letter coming back then. Just to walk you through the letter, it touches on some of the points that already came up tonight. First, that the WNOD is one of the city's great streets. So, there's obviously a local interest in getting this plan, getting this project funded. And that's played out in the adoption of the city's master plan. And it talks about some of the other things that came up tonight, like lighting and like invasive species removal, that these are various elements of making the WNOD into that great street within the city, recognizing how important it is. Talking about how difficult invasive removal is, there's actually 16 acres of land in the WNOD in the city alone. It's 1.4 miles of WNOD, yet 100 feet wide. That adds up quickly. So, it's obviously a great undertaking to do that work. And then the other things that are in this letter are some of the things that Commissioner Stevens pointed out, that this is no longer just a recreational amenity. It is an economic development amenity. It is a transportation amenity. It's something people use to conduct business within and throughout the region. It's also a major connection to regional transportation facilities. That's why VDOT is investing in that overpass over 29. So, other entities in the region are starting to recognize that this is the direction of transportation in this region, that there's only so much room for cars. And if you're going to have more people and more businesses and more economy, you've got to find another way to move people. And ped bike is a perfect fit, especially in the close quarters inside the Beltway. And those things are called out in the letter, and so that's prepared for you as a draft.
I have read the letter. I'd like to change how my name is presented, but otherwise, I would love to sign this.
I'm off the back page. You know, it's kind of weird.
Oh, wow. I would just, my more, my full name instead of Russ. But I fully support this letter. I'm willing to sign it as recently, as soon as this evening, if that will be helpful to move this along.
I think a motion from the group would be helpful.
Okay. I mean, we had said earlier that we would write this sort of letter, and you did it on my behalf, so thank you.
Well, it was a partnership effort. Jeff Sykes, who is the staff liaison to the CACT and the project manager for the crossings element of the WNOD, has obviously had a big hand in preparing these materials.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. I'm a big supporter. So, yes, let's take a motion. If you, everybody's read it. I mean, we just got it this evening, but I was able to read it.
It says we've already done it October 16th.
Today is the 16th.
Oh, today is October. Okay, world. She whiz.
Why don't we take 30 seconds to read the letter, if you hadn't already? And when someone is ready to make a motion, I will entertain it.
I move that we adopt and support this letter going forth of the planning commission to the Nova Parks Transportation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Good thing we are unanimous because that's what it says we're doing.
All right, fantastic. I can come by and sign this when you need me to, or I can, you can send it to me. I can sign it back, or however.
We'll get the logistics worked out.
Great. No, excellent. Full support. And thank you to everybody who brought this to us. I'm really excited about it. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, moving to the next item. Ms. G, do we have any petitions for those items not on the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. There's no old business. Moving to new business, which we, I believe, just addressed. But we had, it's slightly out of order, I guess. And now, 7B Traffic Calming Update by Mr. Sykes. Are you prepared to do that? Excellent.
Good evening. I'd like to start by going back in time a little bit. Back in April, the CACT and the planning commission had a joint meeting, as you may recall. At that point, we kind of gave a briefing as to the status of the traffic calming program. And today, or tonight, I'd like to give you a kind of an indication of what's happened since we came to you back in April. A number of things have happened, both in the way of the program as well as actual physical construction. Over the next 12 months, for example, things that you might, might see, in fact, you'll see already, we're doing what we call Heavy Solutions on Maple Avenue between Great Falls Street and Columbia. There are curb extensions at the intersection of Columbia and Maple. There's also a speed hump that appeared today. So, be careful. It's not marked. So, if you go that way, be careful. It will be marked in the next day or so. But apparently, it was just installed today. We're also doing what's referred to as light solutions on both West Street and Lincoln Avenue. This came about as a result of the council being descended upon by a number of people who were looking for crosswalks and traffic control on Lincoln Avenue back somewhere. I guess it was back in November of last year. And what's happened at that point is we have, we have taken some money that was allocated by council to do what we call the light solutions. And light solutions, in this case, are predominantly striping. We'll be doing a median on Lincoln Avenue at the wide section between Great Falls and the city line. We'll be doing parking edge lines and repainting the center line on the other section of Lincoln up toward West Street. And we've already started construction on some crosswalks. You'll probably see, if you go down Lincoln as well as West Street, you'll see that there are new handicap ramps that have been constructed within the past week or so. So, we've got some more construction to do, and then the actual lines will start to go down very quickly. We're also working right now on a planning effort with Great Falls Street and Little Falls Street. Section of Great Falls is between Maple and Little Falls, and the section of Little Falls is from Great Falls Street basically to Columbia. That's an ongoing effort that's in the planning stage right now. Also, we will be doing, selecting another case. There's another street section after we complete the Maple Avenue project, which we're currently under construction with, probably around the first of the year. And we'll also be doing what we call after-action studies. These are sort of studies of the results of the, of the project, comparing the before and after and determining... and determining whether we move forward with actually the heavy solutions and so on. So that's what's to be expected within the next 12 months. We are moving ahead, we are taking on new cases, as well as working with communities to resolve some of the traffic issues that they have and so on. Again, as I mentioned earlier, back in November, the council allocated $200,000, additional $200,000 for traffic calming. And we're using that, again, to do the light solutions. We're trying to take on as many cases as we can, using the inexpensive markings, if you will, to simulate what might happen in the future. We were lucky in that the city won a grant for $600,000 that we'll have available to us beginning July of 2019, and the thought is to use that, some of that money, or that money, to go back and actually make the measures permanent on the light solutions and so on. So that's what we're planning to do in terms of the long-term funding. We still do not have a steady, sustainable force of funding. We have received from time to time in the CIP, money from council, but we've estimated that'll take at least $200,000 on an annual basis to keep up the momentum that we have now and so on. Other things that have happened are process changes that we've actually developed or trying to develop more fully with, are things like reducing engineering requirements. For example, we're trying to develop individual details for the traffic measures, traffic calming measures, like traffic circles, as well as the speed humps, speed tables, those sorts of devices, and employ those where engineering is at a minimum. In other words, where we're not worried too much about drainage, or it's very obvious what the drainage patterns are. And we've already employed this, for example, at the raised crosswalk at St. James Church on Spring Street up there. Other things are we're outsourcing the data collection to improve the delivery time. We do have staff available to do this, but we find that it's one of those tasks that gets at the bottom of the pile, so to speak. So we're using on-call contractor to do data collection when we need it. One process step has been also to include a CACT member as part of our working group. This was not in the original process, but we found that the CACT liaison, working with the neighborhood working groups, does tend to provide some connectivity with the CACT, which obviously oversees the program. We're also implementing administrative solutions and working with other city agencies as possible, particularly with the Department of Public Works. We get requests for stop signs, which are really a traffic control measure, and we work very closely with the requister and DPW to initiate the response. And again, as I said, we're using an own, we're a specific on-call contractor for NTC projects. The firm that built or is building the Maple Avenue project is, will be our NTC contractor for future hard solutions or heavy solution type things. We have a contract with them to move forward when we need them and so on. So those are some of the things that are going on. Again, in the memo is sort of a history of the program, where we've been, what the past history has been and so on. One thing we're looking at, though, is the timeline of a typical case. There are certain process steps that we're trying to improve to move the process along quicker. The first part of the process, of course, is the application or request from individuals to address traffic issues on their street. If they're interested in moving ahead, we develop what we call a petition of interest. This is a petition that circulated within the area of impact to determine how much interest there is within that group, that part of the neighborhood, to move forward. If there's at least 51% of the households support the interest request, then we move to the next stage, which is data collection, and at which point we rank the project and add it to the queue. Petition of interest, we have like one month, it's typically, can be done very quickly. My experience has been, we get a lot of people who say they want traffic calming, they're willing to do the petition, but you do the map, send the petition to them, and that's the last you hear from them, unfortunately. However, we do have some people who are really gung-ho, and they get this thing done real quick, so that's good to work with people like that, that are really interested. Once the data are collected and the request is evaluated, it goes into the queue, if you will. These are the projects that have been ranked, that qualify, that we're waiting to get to, and that can vary from anywhere from six months to 30 months, depending on the individual location. If the project ranks low, although it qualifies for traffic calming, then it's more than likely gonna remain at the bottom of the queue for a long time, unfortunately. Once a working group is formed, they generally have six months to develop a project and so on. So we've been, it's been a little longer than that, because we've taken on a little extra work, for example, and we're not quite, like to get to the six months again, but we're not quite there yet. Again, we updated the projects. This is from the website on the blue page right here. Right now, there are active cases as of this month, are, again, as I mentioned, Maple Avenue, Little Falls, Great Falls, Northwest, and Lincoln Avenue and so on. We're hoping to be able to complete Maple Avenue, as well as the striping for both West and Lincoln, before the end of this year, and then be able to take on another case, first of the year, thereabouts. And what it's looking like now, it's a good chance it will be taking on the Gundry Drive, Annandale Road intersection, which also includes the Big Chimneys Park area, and so on. Mr. Shields, I believe, last week had indicated that we may be combining that as to one large project, where we take care of the frontage of Big Chimneys Park, as well as the intersection of Gundry and Annandale Road at the same time. That's likely to eat up all $600,000 of our money, unfortunately, but we'll see how that works out. Typically, we only try to take on two cases at a time. I'm the sole staff person working that. I have other responsibilities also. It can be very time-consuming to do the petitions and work with communities and so on, so about two cases, being active is sort of where we are right now, and what we're trying to achieve. Again, kind of to summarize, in terms of the changes that we've made, we're looking, focusing on the light solutions, and then go back and revisit these locations with heavy solutions, once funding becomes available. Again, reduce and simplify the engineering requirements, look at administrative solutions, working closely with the DPW and other departments. Again, the CACT liaison has been helpful with the working groups that we've so far used, and then we're, again, outsourcing data collection. In updating the chart here, we have six cases which are queued. That means the data have been collected, they've been evaluated, they're waiting to be selected, if you will. And then we have eight other locations on the right-hand side, where, again, the petitions are out, people are supposed to get them back, but it hasn't, we haven't received them yet and so on. So that's kind of where we are, six months or eight months from where we came back in April, and be happy to answer any questions.
You've had a very busy six months, it sounds like. A lot of updates since you were before us last. I think I said this last time, but I was a former liaison to the CACT, so I know this process well, and I'm happy to see it improving and focus on the right sort of solutions to the problems that the community has. I think this program has always been a good one, because it really gets citizens at their most sort of everyday interaction to address their needs and say, my street is having an issue, and I'm concerned about it, and this program allows them to feel that the city's being responsive, in a real meaningful way, as it affects them. So I think it's an important program, I'm glad it's gotten funding, excited to hear that it's getting a grant of $600,000, it's significant. It's always a challenge to get it more funding in the CIP, as you know, but, again, I think this is a really important program and makes, being a, driving the roads of Falls Church a more pleasant experience. So thank you for all your work you're doing. I don't have any additional questions, but does anybody else have comments or questions?
I live right at the intersection of Rosemary and Seaton, and the stop signs there have worked out beautifully, along with the crosswalk. It's been absolute blessing and slowing people down, and particularly in the mornings and afternoons with the kids. Now, if we can get rid of the gas company out of that street. My god, what a mess. They keep redigging the same stuff all the time. But anyway, this worked out so well, it's really, because that's coming down the hill towards Parker, people used to really speed, now they have to stop. It works.
Well, that's one of the examples of working with DPW, because, again, the DPW is responsible for traffic control and adding crosswalks and so on. Initially, Stephanie Roger was involved with that, of course, Stephanie's gone now, but we worked together on that, and she took the lead on getting that implemented.
Yeah, it kind of all started with a group of Girl Scouts a long time ago, remember? Coming to council, yeah, yeah.
My Girl Scout troop did the first petition, because they felt like they were gonna die there at their bus stop eventually by a car hitting them. And they had to do a civics project, and that's what they picked, so.
You mentioned the striping at Lincoln and West. I mean, I'm just partial, because that's like my intersection. What striping is planned at that intersection?
Which street?
West, at West Street and Lincoln.
West and Lincoln. I don't know that there's a lot there, other than the center lines are getting repainted and parking edge lines are being added to the street.
Yeah, and what I've always wondered, if you're repainting, have you ever noticed on eastbound West Street, there's a, at the intersection, when you get to Lincoln, there's a right turn lane, and then there's an arrow that just points straight. Doesn't say anything about making a left. I make a left there every day, but the arrow tells me I should only go straight. I don't know why it's like that, you know, have you ever noticed that?
I don't know, I know what you mean, that's a good point.
Yeah, it just is confusing. People mean, my whole neighborhood makes lefts, because to go down our street, but...
I think you're allowed to make a left turn there, there's no prohibited.
Right, but the arrow painted on the pavement just points straight, and the other side points right.
Right, correct.
So if you're repainting and fixing the center line there, you might as well, might as well fix that, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
We haven't put the paint down, so I'll talk to our contractors about it.
Yeah, because it's pretty, it's pretty obvious, yeah, anyhow.
There's a whole process you need to go through to get on the queue, it's only...
Three to thirty minutes.
If you need to file some paperwork, I think we can get you. All right, well, thank you very much.
I had, sorry, I have a couple quick questions. Sorry, just, sorry. I don't know if this falls under your purview, but in intersections where there are already streetlights, but there aren't crosswalk symbols, is that something we look at? Because Great Falls and Little Falls, and Great Falls and Lincoln, like, you're standing there right across the street, you can't actually see the light, so it's awkward as a pedestrian, and if we had the little walking man thing, I don't know, is that part of your process, or is that some other part of the city?
Public Works would handle that, that's not within this program.
Okay. And then, I also noticed, also probably Public Works, but I noticed it on Maple around the time of them doing this thing they're doing. The city seems to be grinding down sidewalks that have lumps, is that Public Works?
Yes.
I'm asking the wrong guy. This one is for you, because I live on Little Falls, and my neighbors will ask me, what's the update? Our light solutions are what? I know our heavy solution is to curb cut on Columbia and actually have a real crosswalk there, but I don't know what the light solution is.
Well, we're looking...
And I don't know what that's...
Been a while since we've met, and I do apologize for the length it's taken to process along. We talked about at the intersection of Little Falls and where the school bus stopped.
West Columbia, yeah, that's where I meant to.
Doing a sort of a nub, extend the sidewalk out into the street.
Yeah.
We'd paint that to simulate that in the short term, and maybe put some posts there to keep, drive people from driving into it and so on.
Yeah.
In the long term, we'd probably come back and do actually a curb extension.
Okay, sort of like, yeah. Yeah, and the stop sign has helped a lot. Here's my final random question. Have you guys noticed that all the new concrete is like bright white, and the old concrete isn't? Is that a different kind of concrete, or does it get, does it match over time?
I don't know, but you're quite, you're quite correct. I guess the city doesn't have a lot of new concrete.
Yeah, maybe it's just...
It does kind of stand out, particularly now at the intersection of Columbia and Maple now with that new work and so on.
All right.
It'll probably deteriorate or not deteriorate, but, you know, the color will fade after a while.
Yeah, okay, cool, thanks.
All right, thank you. Yeah, to the audiovisual, there is a rushing wind noise in here, and I don't think there is a storm of any sort outside, so if you could fix that, that'd be great. We are ready to move on to the next agenda item. We have no other business, and the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any comments about the October 2nd, 2017 minutes?
Very short. I move that we approve the minutes, unless one can come up with a reason.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, who's causing it?
Is it me? It's a physical issue with the wiring in there, and I can't do anything.
Okay, no, I appreciate you...
It's just your microphone.
It's only you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank god it's not me.
I can take a hint, I can take a hint.
We were asking Public Works questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you had encouraged me to make shorter minutes, but this last meeting had only lasted less than 45 minutes, so...
No apology required. They got it quickly approved, and I'm pleased to see, there is a recording. I mean, I know a lot of people are watching right now, but if they have a question, we have a full video recording of this. I think your task is to make these as short as possible and capture them as concisely as you can. Do not apologize for shorter, you can go even shorter. And write, and say, please see the video with any questions. So thank you. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
We're all there.
We're all there, so no, okay. These are approved, fantastic. Planning Commission reports.
I guess we could report on the walk today, so at 6:00 PM.
Yes, please.
At 6:00 PM, there was a walk around the Broad and Washington Project, and I thought that the developer did a nice job. They spray painted on the ground, the corners of the building, the heights, so you could kind of basically really follow the format of the building, and so there was a walk around that. And then council continued on with the, more of the walk, they went over to West Broad, where the Harris Teeter was, and they went down to Lincoln, where Target's gonna be, but unfortunately, we had to come to our meeting, so we had to leave the walk around at that point. They also did a stop at the downtown park and talked about how that's gonna be redeveloped. Anyway, so I thought, it was, you know, it's hard to hear, because there's a lot of traffic, but I found the marks on the ground to be very useful, because you got a really good feel for how far back the building was gonna be. They did a good job of describing how the setbacks were gonna be on Lawton, and the biggest change I saw was the movement of the courtyard. So there was a courtyard opening on Broad Street, so that kind of broke it up on Broad Street, but they moved that courtyard to the corner at Lawton, so now the building's even... now the building's even further away from the residential. So I thought that was a really nice, smart way to do it. I do, that does mean now, on Broad Street, we're going to have to break that building up architecturally with materials, because we don't have that, now we don't have that natural break. So that's something to think about as we, when we do get this project, yeah.
And it was very well attended.
Yeah, it was well attended, and a lot of people from Lawton Street that I recognized and other people as well.
But they've been meeting a lot with the developer and everything, but there are a lot of other people who don't live on Lawton there, which is really good.
I think they've done a good job of working with those neighbors, and there's, just like with West Broad, you know, there's, we did a lot of movement of pushing the building back, so, which has turned out to be a great thing, because when you go on the second floor, you have these wonderful balcony areas, like big areas for outdoor entertainment, and like they have TVs outside and fire pits. So it turned out to be a really nice amenity for the building, the way we had that building pushed back from the neighbors. So that, it works out really well sometimes when you do those.
Any other reports? Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, two items. At this Thursday's Environmental Sustainability Council meeting, they will be hosting a panel discussion on green schools, environmentally advanced designs for schools. They're going to have a representative from the U.S. Green Building Council, somebody from Perkins Eastman, and a couple of architects and the energy manager from Arlington County to talk about some of the recent schools that they've constructed. So that's at 7:30 in the Dogwood Room this Thursday. And then I wanted to kind of give a shout out to the staff for the planning magazine, the APA Planning Magazine. There were several really good articles this time dealing with environmental issues. One was on more communities requiring rooftop solar for new construction, and it's not just California anymore. There was an article on passive house standards for multifamily construction, which is kind of an interesting concept. And then finally, the use of comprehensive planning to systemically reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So there are a number of really good articles in this month, so thank you for that.
I was just going to give a quick update on the Economic Working Group, which is the variety of people talking about the high school campus site. We talked about a lot of things. The things I thought were interesting were, first of all, the consultants' valuation, this had been, I think, confusing to some people, took into account that the developer would need to do a lot of the road and infrastructure improvements. So the city has been looking into various transportation grants and stuff to handle some of that, which would in turn, I think, return, you know, return value to us in terms of being able to get a higher price. So that was interesting, we talked about, especially around the kind of perimeter of the site. There's a lot of challenges with utilities and things like that.
Right, that was huge.
So they're working on that. That takes years, but it'll, if everything goes, it'll work out. They also are trying to preemptively have a plan for what to do if we get any unsolicited bids, if the referendum passes, which I think is smart, because that's one of the things you would want to have a plan for before it happens and not afterwards. I think everyone's generally feeling like they'd like to keep it a competitive process, to make sure we're getting the best deal we can, but we'll see. And then it was clarified, because this has also been confusing, that the current plan would be, if the referendum passes, would be then the schools would move forward with designing a school, and the city would continue to work on this development thing, but that the major construction bonds would not be issued unless there was a development plan in place. So to clarify, what that means is we wouldn't, we wouldn't borrow $120 million without a development plan in hand. And so I think one of the scary, confusing things about the referendum is this notion that we'd borrow all this money and then no development would happen, and the city council members in that group, just, and the city manager clarified that that's certainly not the plan. The plan would be to get the ball rolling if there is a development plan in place that supports the overall effort that we would move forward. Otherwise, we'd come up with some other plan, which would be tough, but I don't know. You were there. Anything else interesting?
I was there. No, I just think the challenges around that site continue to mount.
Very complex.
And I just like what, I just like where the group is headed. I like the discussion. I think they're thinking about the right issues. At the next meeting, we're going to talk a bit about governance, because I think it's getting to a point where all the various stakeholders and city groups need to be managed in a way that is coordinated. So I just like, I just think it's just a really engaged group of people who...
Yeah, and it's great to, you know, we're doing it since, what, like the spring, and it's been pretty methodical in chipping away at all the kind of boring but important things, like two weeks ago, sewers.
Right.
This is like streets and utilities, stuff like that. I think it's really important because all that stuff takes a lot of time. And on the one hand, it seems like we might have a lot of time, because if everything proceeds, you have to still build the school. But, you know, three years will go by before you know it, and I think even stuff like reaching out to Fairbanks County and VDOT about some of the transportation things, I think getting all that started now is definitely important.
Yeah, no, it's...
Anyone bored on a Friday morning since 30?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we have amazing attendance. Thank you, everybody, for showing up.
Yeah, I think we've got the most there, like the four of us.
Andy and I are often there as the formal representatives, but Lindy and Tim have shown up pretty much every meeting. It's impressive, impressive. So thank you for following it and paying attention.
I was most impressed, or, you know, just with all the utility stuff, particularly the electrical.
Yeah, I just...
Oh, my god.
I just like that we're thinking about, like, this group is really digging into these really mundane topics, but thinking about it and trying to think about it holistically and coming up on approach that when this referendum, the results of the referendum happen, we are not just starting the process. We're well on its way.
Not flat-footed. I've got something about Parks and Rec.
Hit it.
The big thing with Parks and Rec is the remodeling and redoing of Cherry Hill Park with all the new equipment, and they've had to shut it off for a while over there. And then also expansion into, there was concern about shade and such because of the trees that needed to be taken down. So it's, but... You have a comment about it. But, yeah, they did have a walk around about that, too.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Fuller, do you have any planning director's report?
Just that on our next agenda, we have actually a number of items. We have a variance on the recommendation to the VZA on the library, and then we have potentially two subdivisions and two site plans. So the November 20th agenda is still being determined, so at this point, we're not monitoring anything for that. And then just as I mentioned on Broad and Washington, that's scheduled to go to first reading with the city council on November 13th. They're not planning to have any additional work sessions. The tour tonight, I think, is sort of taking place of that, and then it'll be referred to board and commissions. And so that would be scheduled for you guys after that. So we want to get it out to the community.
Okay, great.
That was the end of the report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are coming to the end of this meeting. For those who are interested, immediately following the meeting, we are going to have a work session on the 116 Great Falls Street subdivision, which sounds like it'll be coming before us, you just said, on November 6th formally. So any other comments before we adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Mr. Stoddard.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to talk to us about the 116 Great Falls?
Yes, sir. I would like to walk briefly through the staff memo and then turn it over for questions from the commission. So, thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This is a work session item. This is here for information and review, but no action is requested tonight. This is for the 116 Great Falls subdivision. So by way of background, the Planning Commission previously reviewed and made a recommendation on, and the council approved a conditional rezoning for these subject properties. And so as part of a conditional rezoning, what comes with that is what's called proffered conditions. The conceptual development plan as it was approved, as well as the proffered conditions as they were accepted, are shown in the plan set in the 200 series of sheets. That's kept for reference as we go through this application process. A subdivision application is the next logical step for the applicants to go through. What the subdivision allows the applicants to do is to adjust lot lines, to create and combine parcels. If you flip over to the second page of the staff memo, you'll see the four specific things that are being looked at within this subdivision application. And I'm going to bring up the plan sheet so I can walk around what's going on. Oh, boy. Okay.
Your computer restarted. Everything should be fine now.
Yes, all the updates are in.
They all watch the calendar.
It's very exciting.
Latest version of 10-year-old technology. So it's not going to work if I point. No one can see what I'm doing. So this entire plan is showing the block in question. So this is North Maple along the top side of the screen. This is North Washington along the bottom side of the screen. And then you've got West Columbia and Great Falls. So this building in dotted line here, that's the existing Columbia Baptist Church. And then as you come across the block face, you've got the three historic structures, the fourth historic structure counting the Snyder's existing house, and then this in the darker gray is the proposed house. So walking through the numbered items, the things that will happen simultaneously with this application first, there will be a lot line adjustment between 116 Great Falls, which is the Snyder's existing lot, and then 308, which is the first property with the historic structure. That lot line is going to be adjusted to make the Snyder's lot a little bit bigger, and then that will lead to point number two, which is to divide 116 to, in order to create two lots that meet the R1B size requirements. R1B being the conditional rezoning on the property. Number three on the bulleted list is a lot line adjustment between, I think it's right about here. This is, there's an existing lot here with the historic structure that isn't up to the 11250, which is what would be called for in the Historic Cultural and Conservation Overlay District. So that lot is actually going to be expanded in order to bring that lot up to size. That was something that was negotiated as part of the conditional rezoning. And then fourth, on the far other side of the property, this was a wonderful pickup by the Department of Public Works, there's this awkward jog in the property line here, and they actually requested and received from the applicant as part of the conditional rezoning a commitment to granting an easement. So that'll smooth out that line so that the public space will no longer have this jog in it. That easement will be provided as part of the subdivision. So those are the things that are, that is the, that is the limit of the request with the subdivision. If we jump into next steps, this subdivision is the last joint application that will be made in this process by the Columbia Baptist Church and the owners of 116 Great Falls, the Snyder's. And so it's in this subdivision application that this is the time to check to make sure that all of the proffered conditions are enforced as they're supposed to be. Because after this, what you'll see is that the two parties go their separate ways. The Snyder's will come in with a grading plan, which is what's required for construction of a single-family house. And then the Columbia Baptist Church will come in with either a site plan or a site plan amendment for the construction of the surface parking. And so what's called out in the next steps is that as part of the staff review, one of the things staff will be paying particular attention to is making sure that those proffered conditions are properly rolled into the subdivision. That would be things like posting performance bonds for required public improvements, or making sure that the proper easements are set and that all the property lines are in the right place. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to the Planning Commission for any questions that you may have. The applicants are here. They haven't prepared an application, but they are here to respond to questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, so that's no. What, what do we need to do on this? These things seem very administrative to me, that you've looked at them, you've shown the new lot lines. I know that we do this as a matter of course, as the Planning Commission, as it relates to subdivisions, and oftentimes, they go fairly smoothly. This one's been through a lot of discussion and debate, but now that that has occurred, I'm not sure if there's anything we need to do beyond what you laid out, and looks fairly perfunctory. Is there something that we...
That's my expectation. So we're still waiting on a couple of procedural elements. We've got a, for example, we've got a preliminary plat in the application package, but not a final plat yet. Once that comes in, that'll be routed through the staff development review committee, as all applications are. If anything comes up, we'll certainly highlight that for you, but I think, as you said, this has been reviewed now for, going on two years. And so I think there's a pretty good sense of what's supposed to happen. And so I think it's really just a matter of making sure that it's all recorded properly.
Okay. As I said, I don't have any questions.
Oh, quick question. Are there any modifications or waivers being requested as part of the subdivision?
As part of the subdivision?
Hmm.
I don't believe so, no. There's, there is, the waiver that was mentioned in the CDP was for landscaping, and that was between the parking lot and the rear setback of a single-family dwelling. That was covered through the conceptual development plan. So you'll see the, oh, let me see if I can zoom in. Let me go to the correct page. Is that going to be on the landscaping plan? Yep. So right, so you hear it listed. This is, this is part of the preliminary landscaping plan that was included in the conceptual development plan, and it does note that there will be a waiver required in order to set the 10-foot buffer for landscaping within the sort of what would be calculated as the R1A backyard setback.
Is the church technically required to provide screening along now, that new common lot line that's going to be between the new house and, I guess what you call the historic house, but you know, it's part of the church use? Is there any screening that's required? Does ordinance require screening along that common lot line?
Are you talking about 308 and this new proposed structure, this 306?
Yeah.
That's something we can research. At this point, they both have the same zoning district.
Right, but it's the use. Isn't normally the use, not the zoning district, for screening?
We can research that.
I'm just, I just want to make sure. I mean, maybe there's not, but normally, it's the use, right? Not the zoning district, per se.
We'll look that up, and we'll get an answer back to you when we bring it back.
Okay. Well, because even if, and maybe their modification might be totally okay because it's between a, what they're using as a residential structure. Is someone living in that house? The church have some people living there? They rent it out? Right?
Yes, they use it as housing for staff.
Right. So maybe, you know, maybe a modification or waiver would be okay, but we should know if it's needed.
Absolutely. I think that's a good question to raise, and something we'll look up.
Well, thank god we had this work session. You've justified it.
If you give me more time, I'll try to find more stuff.
Saved us.
I mean, the lot lines, obviously, those are identical to what was in the CDP, right? The lot lines, the proposed lot lines, as they're depicted here, are the same as what the Planning Commission and City Council approved, right? There's no changes to that.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons we structured the application package here as we did, so that it's very easy to step through what was approved in the 200s, and then looking at what's the preliminary plat, what's the final plat. So you'll see the information step through the progression of the application and review process.
Just another quick question. I don't want to, you know, belabor this, but the proposed house, the footprint of the proposed house that's shown, are they bound to that when they file for their info grading plan? Or is that, is that just an approximate conceptual footprint, or?
That is what's proposed in the conceptual development plan. So this is a little bit different, because normally conceptual development plans are used for commercial uses, where there is the expectation that it's going to go where it's shown.
Right.
And I, and I think there was similar language used for this, so there would be an expectation that it would go in the same position. I think if there were a reason to move it, we could look at the language that allows for variability.
Okay, no, just curious.
I think that was one of the, one of the benefits of the CDP was that it actually locked the church's three historic structures into their current footprints. What you'll often see with historic structures is that the structure's maintained, and then additions are made onto the back, which in some way negates the historic nature of them. But by putting a CDP, a conceptual development plan around these things, that's an envelope of protection that... that's an envelope of protection that doesn't exist on other structures.
Right. The city's urban forester is fine with all the plant selections for the parking area. No problems there.
She's certainly been involved with the, with the layout of the landscaping, I think, specific.
Yeah, we haven't picked actual plants yet, so that would go when the church does their site plan. That's when we would pick the actual plant selection, but...
Right, and the site plan will come back here, right? The site plan will come back to us, right, right, okay.
All right. Yep, Mr. Fuller?
I had a question while you're up. I noticed the new sidewalks being installed along the top, all the way to the right. Beyond that, down to the intersection of West Columbia Street, I noticed on the plan, there's an easement. Is there an existing walk there now?
There is. On the other side of the drive is where the sidewalk runs.
I just couldn't tell, looking at the drawings, but, so we'll have a sidewalk all the way down the block?
Yeah, it'll provide a, yes, along the entire block face.
The only reason I was asking is because the larger residual church lot is being subdivided to accommodate that one lot there on the right. So it sort of brings the whole thing into play, so.
One last question. Again, I don't, I don't want to be nitpicky here, but there's an existing fence that along North Maple, on the Snyder's existing, along their existing house, that I believe is too tall because it's in a front yard and...
It's a swimming pool, I think, is what it is.
Right, doesn't matter, but there's still, I don't think the swimming pool exempts them from the height of the fence. No, just, well, four feet minimum for a swimming pool. So that fence is too tall, unless they've gotten a variance for it. I don't think they did. I don't know. But maybe look into that. The fence along Great, along North Maple is, you're only allowed a four-foot fence in a front yard in the city, as far as I know, unless you get a variance.
Well, wasn't that one of the proffers that the fence is going to be removed?
It's all gone? All right, well, anything that goes in should be conformed.
That was like one of their proffers, so the fence, they would get rid of their ugly fence.
Just checking.
Anything else? All right, well, good thing we had this work session. I suspect next meeting will be very unsuspenseful. So, thank you, and I have nothing else on this work session. We are complete, correct? All right, thank you, everybody.